I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, good evening, Chair Leinbach, Board of Directors and Staff. I am Brian Hendricks, Interim Recreation Manager here at the Cordova Recreation Park District. And to lead us in the pledge allegiance tonight, we have members of the Hideout Advisory Board. So, we will have them start us off.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic towards which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if everyone will please remain standing for a brief moment of silence in memory of City Councilman Dan Scoglan that passed away last month.
So, now, I would like to introduce one of our new employees here at CRPD, and it is Brandy Dionne. She is from, well, she currently worked 10 years as a supervisor at West Sacramento. She graduated from San Jose State, and she is our Recreation Supervisor 2, housed out of the Hagan Community Center. And her focus will be on youth and teen programs, and then also aquatics. So, I'd like to have Brandy say a little bit about herself, and then also introduce our great teen council that we have here.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very excited to be here. As Brian mentioned, I worked for the City of West Sacramento for 10 years, where I oversaw youth and teen programs for seven of those years, and the last three years was with our aquatics department. So, I'm really excited to be in the Cordova Recreation and Park District family now. I'm really excited for the Cordova Community Pool Project. That was a really big draw for me to join this new community. I'm real excited to work with this group of teens, as well as with the staff. I do want to just take a minute to acknowledge our staff member Darlene, who has really been heading up the Teen Advisory Board. And I'm going to pass it off to them to tell you just a brief bit of what they've been working on the last year. We have our Board of Gianna, Anthony, Tyler, and Kylie. So, now, I'll ask Gianna to say a few words.
Hi. My name is Gianna. As you guys already know, and I am President of the Teen Advisory Board, AKA TAB. I want to speak to you guys briefly about how, over the course of the past few months, how I've built many skills, such as building my self-confidence, public speaking, and managing money, teamwork. And I can't thank anyone enough for how much that's really improved my self-goal of becoming an entrepreneur. So, I want to thank everyone.
Hello. I am Anthony Vargas. My job in the Teen Advisory Board is treasurer. And we had an event called Halloween at Hagan. It helped me and us manage our money with pride and pleasure, because we earned, sorry, we earned that money with hard work and effort. And I would just like to thank everybody that helped us achieve this.
Hello. My name is Tyler Pereira. I'm currently a board member. And we had, last month, we had an event called Hopping at Hagen. So, basically, where we got, so, our job was, we made a little obstacle course for kids to join. And joining TAB, Teen Advisory Board, has really helped me, because I'm great with working with kids, and I know how to, when to push them or when to stop.
I'm Kylie Wells, and I'm Relations Officer.
Kylie came to show her support. She was not prepared to speak. So, thank you, teens, for being here, and I really look forward to our work with this wonderful group of students. Thank you.
I just want to say real quick, for those of you that were at the post fee, this is the very first time these two did public speaking. They had notes in there they wanted to bring with them, and I was backstage sort of talking them, oh, you don't need notes. So, they put them in their pockets instead. So, now, you can tell that they really like and enjoy speaking. So, once again, thank you for letting us bring them tonight.
I just wanted to say something. I wanted to congratulate you for standing up and being a leader. And I'm hoping we get a chance to see you a lot more, and whether they're in events that you want to do, or at the same time, if you'd like to express some of your opinions. You did an excellent job with your speaking and your presentation, and I think a lot of the youth can really learn that from you. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment and time.
And thank you for coming and leading our pledge as well. And now, we will move on to the roll call.
We received advanced notification that Secretary Yearwood would be absent this evening. Director Sloan?
Present.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Here.
And Chair Leinbach?
Here.
And now, this is the time on our agenda for Board Disclosures on Action Items. Are there any Board disclosures?
Chair Leinbach, I would like to, on the Shooting Center, I did discuss with a gentleman who was in the audience tonight, just briefly. I asked him why I was here, and he told me why I was here. So, that's the extent of my conversation with the gentleman over this, but I did speak to somebody about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Anyone else? Okay. So, we will move on to Item B, Comments by the Public on Non-Agenda Items.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I have one speaker card. I would like to invite Annie Di Maria Norris to the podium, please.
Did you guys miss me last month?
Yes. We did.
So, I wanted to say thank you for letting me speak. And I wanted to make sure that you noticed that there were some minutes included for our last two meetings from the Friends Board, to kind of keep the board abreast of what's going on, what we're doing. And one of the exciting things that is in your packet was, we did a special planning meeting to go over future fundraising. And we have actually picked a date for our, I won't give away the title yet, our wine event. So, it's going to be on May 19th of 2018. We're giving ourselves a year to prepare, plan appropriately. It will be out at Hagan Park. And my husband was so pleased to give some input on the name. And currently, we are thinking, we've pretty much decided we're going to go with Red, White, and Brew Fest. So, I thought that was kind of with it being in May, Memorial Day, at the end of the month, and you're heading into summer, and kind of a little patriotic, but it being sure to include both wine and beer vendors. So, there will be both. We're currently still playing with the concept of having some type of food available this year, or next year, I guess, at the event, so that people who want to come and enjoy a light meal with their wine, they don't feel like they have to leave to go eat like the last event. And we don't have people getting tipsy, because there's no food. So, and I'll have to scrounge in my purse to provide a board member with a bar to eat, Mr. Sloan. Anyways, it was really great, though, to see our packet included, and I just wanted to let you know, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. My contact information is always available. Send me an email. Our next meeting was supposed to be last night, and unfortunately, we had to delay it till next week. So, it will be on Tuesday of next week. If anyone would like to come and attend, it will be upstairs in the usual place, the CRPD conference room. However, that does just bring to light that I'd like to just publicly ask again, we need more volunteers. Unfortunately, we had to cancel last night, because we are working with a minimum board. And when one person has a family emergency, it means we have to cancel the meeting. So, please, if you have any friends or colleagues in the neighborhood, in our park district, that would like to help out, please send them our way.
Thank you very much, Annie, and thank you for all your work with Friends of Cordova.
You're very welcome.
Just a quick question. How many seats in your board?
We'd like to have five. Right now, we're currently operating with three, but we can have up to seven, I believe.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. Consent Calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon in one motion without discussion. Any member of the Board, staff, or public may request an item be pulled for discussion. Any pulled items will be heard and acted upon individually. And this evening, we have four items on the consent calendar. I would like to pull Item C1 for a separate vote, please.
And would anyone else like to have an item pulled from the consent calendar? I would like to pull Item C4, please. So, can I have a motion to approve Items C2 and 3?
So, I will move that we approve Consent Calendar Items C2 and C3, as provided by staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
I second that.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent. On Item C1, which is the minutes from the April 19th Board Meeting, we are asking that Director Reyes abstain due to her absence at that meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve Item C1?
I make a motion. We approve Item C1 of the Consent Calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Stanzel and Sloan, roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Abstain.
Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
So, on Item C4, which is regarding the two-year print mail contract for the district brochure, I just had a, I wanted to get a little clarification on the broad range of the amounts that we're approving here for that contract.
So, I have Becca, who is facilitating that contract, and she has some more information for you.
So, Becca Niles, Community Relations Coordinator. To answer your question, Director Leinbach, we have a broad range, which is not normal for what we have done in the past, because we wanted to give ourselves room for being able to add in new pages, especially with the 60th anniversary being next year. Wanted to have a section possibly highlighting some of the history and growth and accomplishments over the last 60 years. So, we wanted to make sure that we had it in the budget to have less pages if we needed to reduce the size. If we also needed to grow it and add pages, there's also been talk about adding an advertising section as well. So, we wanted to give ourselves some room to grow for the next two years.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no other question about that item.
And that was with adding four pages, right? One sheet. Another question, it was a question of, what is it, is 8.25% interest on tax? I thought, where's the 8% in the county?
Because it's, we fall into the city, it's charged that way, I believe.
Because we fall in the city, or the business we do, who does, if they fall outside the city, don't we pay them?
She's in the city of Sacramento, and they're 8.25.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
City? Uh-oh. And we don't, they don't charge tax on, they just charge tax on a certain amount, it looks like here.
They only charge tax on the 2, the 2,500 that we have as an overrun given to us as a district. We're not charged tax on the ones that are mailed out.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
So, I'd like to move that we authorize the District Administrator to execute a two-year print mail contract with Gillum and Associates Printing Services between the amounts of $15,953 to $23,306 per guide, plus postage for the printing and mailing of the biannual recreation guide.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that opinion.
Thank you, Director Sloan.
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
Okay. At this time, we'll move on to Item D, Committee Reports.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. We have one committee report, which is the Standing Committee for Budget and Finance from April 13th, and that is for Vice Chair Reyes, as she was absent from the last Board Meeting.
Thank you. So, I'm sure Chair Leinbach had given you some ideas, but in the Finance Committee meeting that we had on the 13th of April, the discussion items were really to look over and to understand the draft fiscal audit that we are going to be facing today, the final. And then, we also did some, it was really good, because there was an update on the fiscal year 17, 18, and there was a lot of, I would say, more clarification. You do know that there's a new budget process that we're going through. And Finance Manager Matt Goodell was really good with being able to show us the efficiencies that this new process was going to provide us. The third item that we discussed was the Cordova Shooting Center finances. And there was just, at that point, there was a page where it simply showed, you know, some costs versus return on investments, et cetera. And obviously, staff was then directed to go ahead and provide more information, which we have in our packet today. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. And now, we will move on to Item E, Presentations.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. Item E1 is a presentation of Public Agency Grant Award by the USA Softball of Sacramento, Greater Sacramento Softball Association. And I'd like to introduce Michael McPherson.
Hello, Board Members, Chair Ladies. How are you doing this evening?
Good.
Good. All right. So, I'm here to let you guys know that Cordova and the Mather Sports Center was able to attain a grant from the USA Softball Sacramento this year. Every year, we have a big meeting where all the agencies get together, and we hash out softball-related inquiries and get our stuff for the upcoming seasons. But every year, USA Softball Sacramento, which used to be the Greater Sacramento Softball Association, they went under change, logo changed this year. But they do grant money every year, and I think up to $1,000. And so, they dole it out in $2,500 increments. So, this year, I decided to write a grant letter and ask for $1,100, because we are going to be putting in sports complex industrial fans in the dugouts, because, as you guys all know, living here in California, it gets a little warm, and it gets especially warm out on our synthetic turf fields by probably another 15 degrees. And even though it's in open air, those dugouts are very, they get very hot, especially stagnant during the summer when there's no wind going on. So, I decided to write the grant, and we were granted the $1,100. So, we'll probably be putting in the fans, if not, right before our Summer League, the first couple of weeks of our Summer League. But I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Dubchansky from USA Softball Sacramento.
Good evening, and hi, Terry. I worked with Terry for a number of years at Fulton Al Camino Recreation Park District. So, it's great to see her as the chair. Again, my name is Jeff Dubchansky. I'm officially the Commissioner of USA Softball Sacramento. And we represent about 10,000 kids and coaches, and about 20,000 adult players. And we stretch from South Lake Tahoe to Dixon, and on the north to Lincoln, down to Galt. And all the public agencies in the area are part of our association, whether it's Woodland or Cordova, City of Roseville, City of Sacramento. They all belong to USA Softball Sacramento. And this is my 20th year as the Commissioner. And since I, when I started back in 1998, we started a grant program for public agency improvements to facilities. Since I was a softball guy and played and umpired, I thought it would be great to give back to the public agencies. So, we make available $10,000 a year, plus or minus. And Michael was smart enough to apply for what I call the world's easiest grant program. Basically, you tell us what you want, and if we can do it, we fund it. So, Michael wanted fans for the dugout, we funded. So, tonight, I'm here to present to you the best part of my job, which is giving away money. And tonight, I'd like to present you with a check. And here's my check, of course, but you can't take this one to the bank. So, it'd be tough to run through the machine, but I have the real one that I'll give to Michael. So, if we'd like to take a picture, sometimes we want to do that, we can do that, and then I'll let you go to the rest of the meeting.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. If everyone wants to look at me, please, one, two, three big smiles. We're going to do a couple more. One, two, three. Last one. One, two, three. All right. Thank you very much.
You bet. You're very welcome. You bet. Good to see you, Terry. And I better find the real check. Should we go to the finance department, or? You bet. All right. Thank you very much. Unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Can we deposit it tomorrow?
You can deposit the real one tomorrow. Thanks, Michael. We'll see you.
All right. Thank you very much, Board Members.
I just wanted to comment, Michael, good job. I mean, this is exactly what we need, to be able to see the need and see the opportunity to go out for resources, because I have heard that the dugout can really get very hot.
Absolutely.
And the poor kids have to suffer it, and then they're supposed to go out and do their best, you know?
Exactly.
So, that's really wonderful. Thank you. I'm hoping you're going to start off a barrage of awards, grant awards coming our way, all for the kids.
Yeah. It was actually started a couple of years ago with one of my coworkers, Jason Kugola. And yeah, this year, he helped me write this grant, because he did it a couple of years ago and got his money. So, hopefully, this'll, like you said, start off a chain of events.
That's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. So, we move on to Item E2.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. Item E2 is a presentation of the final independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2015-16. And later on the agenda, action will be taken by the Board of Directors. And I will turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
Good evening. So, also, who we have in attendance in the audience tonight is Brett Jones. He's a representative from JJACPA, which is our auditing group that we contract with. And he's here to present and to answer any questions of the audit that you have as part of the board package.
Thank you, Matt. As Matt mentioned, my name is Brett Jones. I was assigned to the audit this year. The partner on the job was Joseph Arch, and unfortunately, he was sick today, so he couldn't make it. So, I'm here in his place. We have issued our audit report on the financial statements. You can find it on the first page of the financial section preceding the management's discussion and analysis. We issued an unmodified opinion on that report. That is the highest level you can get, so that's very good. In addition to that report, we have also issued our letter to the Board. It's a communications with those charge which governs. It's used to be called the management letter, but now it has that long name. In this letter, it kind of just describes some aspects of the engagement, our responsibility, management's responsibilities, timing, scope. If there's any changes in accounting policies, it would be in this letter. If there's any uncorrected misstatements by management, it would be in here. And also, if there is any findings, any internal control findings, or any other deficiencies that we notice, it would be in this letter. And we're pleased to report that we had nothing to report. So, that's also very good, and thanks to Matt for helping us out. So, with that, if there are any questions on the audit or the letter, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I was, I was going to say that when I get the audit report, now I go to the front and to the back, what are the findings, you know, what are we supposed to be working on? And it seems like staff has done a great job working with your office to see to it that the audit was done properly. Matt, remember when we had countouts of numbers? And so, this is really good. Thank you.
Well, I was only going to comment, sort of piggybacking on that, that it's great to see an unqualified opinion. It's great to see no findings. It's a testament to the hard work that Matt and the rest of the staff in his department, you know, did to clean it up and are doing to keep it clean going forward. So, we really, really appreciate that, Matt. And thank you for the work you do, letting us know how they're doing.
Yes. Good job, staff.
Okay. So, there being no other comments or questions, we're going to move on to the regular calendar.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. In consideration of the members of the audience that we have here, we have decided to change the order of the items on the agenda. Since our consultant is here for the audit, we will move forward with Item F1. And then, following that, we will go straight into Item F5.
Okay.
So, Item F1 is to accept the independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2015-16 as presented.
I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt the, accept the independent auditor's report and financial statement for the fiscal year 2015-16 as presented.
Thank you, Director Sloan.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
So, on Item C4, which is regarding the two-year print mail contract for the district brochure, I just had a, I wanted to get a little clarification on the broad range of the amounts that we're approving here for that contract.
So, I have Becca, who is facilitating that contract, and she has some more information for you.
So, Becca Niles, Community Relations Coordinator. To answer your question, Director Leinbach, we have a broad range, which is not normal for what we have done in the past, because we wanted to give ourselves room for being able to add in new pages, especially with the 60th anniversary being next year. Wanted to have a section possibly highlighting some of the history and growth and accomplishments over the last 60 years. So, we wanted to make sure that we had it in the budget to have less pages if we needed to reduce the size. If we also needed to grow it and add pages, there's also been talk about adding an advertising section as well. So, we wanted to give ourselves some room to grow for the next two years.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no other question about that item.
And that was with adding four pages, right? One sheet. Another question, it was a question of, what is it, is 8.25% interest on tax? I thought, where's the 8% in the county?
Because it's, we fall into the city, it's charged that way, I believe.
Because we fall in the city, or the business we do, who does, if they fall outside the city, don't we pay them?
She's in the city of Sacramento, and they're 8.25.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
City? Uh-oh. And we don't, they don't charge tax on, they just charge tax on a certain amount, it looks like here.
They only charge tax on the 2,500 that we have as an overrun given to us as a district. We're not charged tax on the ones that are mailed out.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
So, I'd like to move that we authorize the District Administrator to execute a two-year print mail contract with Gillum and Associates Printing Services between the amounts of $15,953 to $23,306 per guide, plus postage for the printing and mailing of the biannual recreation guide.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that opinion.
Thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we will then move on to Item?
Five.
Oh, I've lost my, is it F5?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Leinbach. Item F5 is to authorize the District Administrator to notify the Cordova Shooting Center Concessionaire, Marksmanship Consultants, Incorporated, that the district will not extend its concessionaire agreement beyond the term of June 30th, 2018. And I will turn it over to Park Planning and Development Manager Laura Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Leinbach and members of the Board. This presentation is going to be a summary of the research and the analysis that district staff has conducted on the shooting center site. The Shooting Center was deeded over to the Park District in 1977 from the federal government. At that time, Marksmanship Consultants was operating the facility that they had taken over from the Winchester Gun Club in the early '70s. Marksmanship Consultants had been the district's concessionaire at the site since 1979. So as far as the site goes, the Shooting Center property is right smack dab in the middle of our district. It's a 73.27 acre parcel that is right on a busy intersection of Sunrise Boulevard and Douglas Road. The district is currently looking at a district-wide amenity distribution. And there will be some discussions with the board at a future date at a visioning session on May 31st to talk about how to best distribute all of our facilities across the entire district. Should the board decide to not continue the lease agreement, then at that time, at that meeting, we could discuss potential uses for the property in the future. So a lot of development is going on, as you know. And at one point, the Shooting Center property was out in the country, basically. But there has been development that is beginning to close in around it. And of note is that south of Douglas Road, right across from the Shooting Center, the Rayleigh Shopping Center is currently under construction and near completion. Right immediately adjacent to the Rayleigh Shopping Center is high-density residential development that will be coming in at some point in the future. Last summer, August of 2016, the City of Rancho Cordova approved the Rio del Oro specific plan, which is immediately across the street, across Sunrise. That will bring another 33,000 people into the Park District. When we get down into a closer view and we overlay the Rio del Oro specific plan zoning onto our map, we see that immediately across Sunrise from the Shooting Center is expected to be retail commercial development with high-density and medium-density residential properties right behind those and single-family residential development across Sunrise at the north end of the Shooting Center property. It's also interesting to note that the intersection of Sunrise and Douglas, according to City of Rancho Cordova traffic count, sees 29,000 vehicles a day. It's a high-visibility intersection. The site does have some vernal pools and some creeks on the site. And so those, we're showing from our aerial view approximately what the amount of vernal pools on the site is. So we know that there is lead issues on the site from the long-term operations of the Shooting Center property. So district staff has conducted some research to determine what that means for the district should the board decide that they want to discontinue the lease agreement with the concessionaire. So we've met, the staff has met with county and state oversight agencies. We've also met with remediation consulting firms, and we've researched case studies of very similar sites. There's a lot of terms around the whole issue of lead cleanup. So I wanted to kind of walk you through what some of those terms are so that we could all be clear about what we're talking about at different stages of lead cleanup. So right now, the concessionaire, in partnership with the district, works... They do a lead reclamation, and they do that every five years. And that's based on the Environmental Protection Agency's best management practices. We currently have a contract with a contractor that will come in in July. When we wrote this, it was intended that it would be there by June, but we've gotten an update. They'll be in in July to do the lead reclamation. And what that is, is that's when they go in and they basically scoop up all the spent lead and they recycle it, and they're actually able to make some money on that. And the profit is split between the concessionaire and the district on that. So at the point that the Shooting Center operations would cease, at that point, then the district needs to do a lead stabilization. And the lead stabilization is to protect the public, basically. To protect the public from being exposed to the lead that's already on the site and to prevent that lead from migrating off of the site. Now, in order to come up with a stabilization plan, we are gonna need to coordinate with the other agencies that have authority. And we also are gonna need the help of a consultant that specializes in remediation. So we will need that to put together a proposal that we can bring before you at a future meeting, if that's something that you want to see us do. So the final step is the lead remediation. And that is the permanent removal of the lead contamination from the site. It's either removal or it's containment. And so you can scoop, literally scoop up all the contaminated soil and take it out as a hazardous waste. Or, in some cases, the contaminated soil can be capped with several feet of clean soil. Or you can construct pavement over top of it, in some cases, as a cap to keep that lead from migrating. So at this point, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Christina James, who is our landscape architect. And she's done the lion's share of the research on the process and on the case studies. So she will come present that portion of it.
Good evening, members of the board. In our informal research with the oversight agencies, a member of the DTSC, which is the Department of Toxic Control Substance, the state oversight agency, provided us with this diagram. It's a flow chart of how a lead remediation project would go. It's really helpful for us to understand the full process. It starts with site discovery, the identification of a contaminant. It moves into a voluntary cleanup agreement with the state, a community assessment, looking at what your community profile is. From there, it moves on to what's called a preliminary endangerment assessment. And this is simply going into the site and testing and sampling, where is the lead? What is the extent of the contamination? Going along with this is the site characterization piece. And then from there, you would move on to a remediation action plan or a removal action work plan, as they call it here. That happens concurrently with any SEQA documentation. So all through this process, an agency would be working with the oversight agencies and with a consultant. They would finalize the remediation action plan and the SEQA documentation, and then move into implementation, where contractors are actually coming on site and doing the removal work. At that point, once the removal has been accomplished to the state's satisfaction, they certify the site. And then, in some cases, when there's, for example, capping, there may be ongoing maintenance and operation where DTSC is coming back onto the site to inspect the capping and the containment to make sure that no lead is, or whatever the contaminant is, that it's not migrating. So on the state website, there are several case studies that we looked at throughout the state of California that are informative to show how cleanup is happening over across the state. This is one that we looked at. It was a former shooting club and is now being used recreationally. It's a school site. They found lead in 1999. They did a removal action plan, and the DTSC certified the site in 2005. So now the site is being used currently for an aquatic center and a performing arts center. You can see that the site remediation method included off-haul only. It was only two acres, which typically off-haul is a more expensive option. So you can see that their costs were 210,000 per acre. Another case study before you tonight is a park in the Bay Area. This six-acre park was a former firing range. Now it's being used as passive recreation trails. The site remediation technique in this case was a capped consolidation cell. So it was two feet of clean soil and a wire mesh barrier placed over impacted soil. Some of the future land use prohibitions, you can see, because there is still contaminated soil on the site, the city and county of San Francisco is not allowed to have a daycare center on this site, an elder care center. They're not allowed to do any groundwater extraction. And then if you look, we did some further research on this site, and their consultant proposal estimated 2.5 to 4.5 for complete off-haul versus 700,000 to 850,000 for capping on-site. You can kind of get a sense for what your different costs are when you're looking at those different remediation methods. The final case study that we looked at and actually had the opportunity to speak with the project manager, who works for the City of Sacramento. It's a local project, City of Sacramento, 10-acre park site, that was badly in need of repair. 1.7 million needed to bring the facility within co-compliance. Their risk manager and city manager determined they should close the pistol range. This is an indoor range in December of 2014. Nothing happened. Subsequently, until 2016, the city received a notice of corrective action from the Environmental Management Department of the county, requiring that the city sample the site to determine the extent of the contamination and then create a work plan to mitigate and treat that. In their sampling, through atmospheric modeling, they discovered that because of the building's ventilation system, actually lead-contaminated air was escaping to the surrounding residential properties. So they ended up doing not only a remediation action plan for the 10-acre park site, but a remediation action plan for the surrounding properties, residential properties. Those plans are currently being reviewed, and the project is expected to be complete by November 2017. Estimated cost, 1.4 million. So every site is different, but those give us kind of a look at what different sites may entail. And then now Laura's gonna speak a little bit more about the research we did with environmental consultants on this.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, so knowing that we were definitely going to need the assistance of an environmental consultant to provide the stabilization plan, planning, and the ultimate lead remediation plan. We invited two different consulting firms into our office to get their information and their recommendations. It was an informal process. And so we know that the whole process will include the need to go out and test different sites, different soil samples all over the site to determine the full level of the contamination and the varying degrees of contamination. And then with that, then they will do data validation, they will provide the report, they will work with the other authority and other agencies in order to make sure that that report meets all those requirements. One of the consultants provided us with this diagram that shows the potential extent of contamination from the trap and skeet shooting area of the Shooting Center. And so there's various levels of sampling that will have to occur throughout that site. There's also the rifle range and the pistol range that's further south, and part of that is not even on that picture there. But every single site is unique. So in the research that we did, there's no hard and fast costs that you can get as a rule of thumb that we can report to you to say, the ultimate cost of this will be X. Even the consultants that we interviewed, in their preliminary estimates, had a wide variation of 150,000 to 800,000. So the only way that we will be able to say to you with certainty as to what our consultant costs will be will be to go through a formal RFQ process that we would come back to you before releasing that out on the street. So there's several other comments I wanted to make about the land use. And I mentioned earlier that it's a 73-acre site. Our largest park is the Hagan Park, and it's 80 acres, and that's our flagship park. This is almost as big as that, and it's also on a very busy intersection, which does make it a prime piece of property. There are wetlands and vernal pools on the site, and we don't know how much that might restrict the ability to develop the full 73 acres. It could be as much as 50%, but we don't really know that until we know exactly where the wetlands are, which would be determined by a wetland delineation report, and then coordination with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There's also the deed. The deed is a restrictive deed that will only allow the property to be used for park and recreation purposes. And it needs to be held by a governmental agency, according to the deed. The current programming of that site can change with the written concurrence from the federal government, and that authority is delegated to the National Park Service. There are some operational considerations. The upgrades are currently needed to meet safety and accessibility codes. And per the concessionaire's agreement, any repair over $1,500 is CRPD's responsibility. The major upgrades are needed in order to continue safe operations of the Shooting Center. So the highest priority upgrades that we know of, combined in cost, is $2 million. And that's for the pistol range upgrade and the rifle range upgrade together. This summer, we were told by Sacramento County Environmental Management Department that they plan to make an inspection of the operations, at which point it could be that there will be some additional requirements that will require upgrades that we're not yet aware of. We are concerned that continued operation may increase the future lead remediation costs as development occurs around the site and immediately adjacent to the site, as Christina indicated in that last case study with the City of Sacramento. And we do feel that the current use is incompatible with the surrounding urban development that's closing in on the site. The other thing that we have discovered is that the cost to upgrade the Shooting Center will not generate a return on the investment. In today's dollars, it will generate less than $2 million for the district within 10 years. And so the investment that we would make would be at risk from public pressure to close the site within 10 years as those other projects develop out. And then the existing concessionaire's agreement expires on June 30th of 2018. So before you, in item F5, you have a board action where staff is recommending that the board authorize the district administrator to notify marksmanship consultants that the district will not extend the agreement beyond the June 30th of 2018. Should the board decide to take that action, then staff would follow up by providing marksmanship a one-year notice, which is a more generous notice than the existing concessionaire's agreement actually requires. The existing concessionaire's agreement only requires a six-months notice. We wanted to do that to be fair, to give the concessionaire, who's been a longstanding business partner with the district, as much notice as we possibly could about this potential action. The other thing that we'll do is we will need to terminate the architect's agreement that the architect has provided preliminary designs as well as cost estimates for several different renovation options. We'll have to terminate that agreement because we will not proceed into construction documents. And then, of course, staff will continue to research and provide a recommendation regarding lead stabilization and remediation at a later date. Should the board decide to continue the operation of the site as a Shooting Center beyond the June 30th, 2018 date, then we will need to immediately work on identifying $2 million in which to make the upgrades with. And we will need to do those shortly, within a year. in which to make the upgrades with, and we will need to do those shortly, within a year. And if that's the case, then what will happen is that project will become the district's highest priority project for two reasons. One is the urgent need to bring the facility up to code and safety compliant, and also to be able to have the funding available to make those renovations. So that concludes the presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
So at this time, what we'll do is we'll move on to the public comment portion, if there are any requests for public comment, and then we will, after the public comment period has closed, we will move on to directors' questions and comments.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. At this time, I have two speaker cards. I would like to call Dr. John Morris to the podium, please. Following Mr. Morris will be Mr. Kurt Haven.
John Morris, I'm a resident of Anatolia. I've been here for a couple of years. I do believe that businesses should be given a chance. I believe that the shooting center has been given, longer than I've been alive, I mean, I'm still in my 30s, to exist and to be given time, but unfortunately, the area around them has changed. And so I believe it is time to give another business or another facility a chance at this time because we want to let the city grow. We want also to get rid of all that lead. I think that's a real issue for the people around us, for our drinking water. And I really think that we can also use some of that money to save for a rainy day in case something happens in the future. And I know there are other big projects that the city wants to try and do. And I obviously respect and understand there are a lot of other people here that have probably a different opinion than I do. But I do want to say, I want to thank the board for taking time to consider this. I know it's a big decision for a lot of people, but I believe for the future of the city that it can make a big impact and difference on helping us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, or Dr. Morris.
Next, I'd like to call Kurt Haven to the podium, please.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach, members of the board. Excuse me. I'm Kurt Haven, Director of Economic Development, city of Rancho Cordova. Great staff report, a lot of good information there. I'm representing the city of Rancho Cordova tonight. I wear lots of hats in the community, but that's my job tonight. And I just want to start out that I don't believe in NIMBYism. So we have a few amenities in the city of Rancho Cordova, an airfield, a rendering plant, a shooting range. And, you know, as the area grows, of course, the residents and the businesses knew about the activities of an airfield, know about the rendering plant, know about the shooting center. But I also believe that in a higher and better use of properties. And my job in economic development is to bring new jobs, new wealth to our city. So we're always looking for areas, and Folsom Blower is a great example. Our job is not to kick out the businesses that are there, but to improve, uplift, and to upgrade. So we believe, the city believes that this property really has some benefit that we're not using. As discussed, I think 29,000 car counts, a little low, it's probably closer to 50, daily commuters running back and forth in and out of Rancho Cordova. In the 14 years of working in economic development for the city, we have been asked by aquatic centers, water slide parks, field of dreams type of projects of, boy, this would be a great location to do something different. Now, I want to regress. I shoot at that center. I enjoy the service that they've given us. When I was a board member of the park district, I supported them, and I really would like to see them, that use continue, but somewhere else. There is going to be a lot of growth in that area, lots of commercial growth. We are finishing the Rayleigh Center. Across the street will be another commercial center. On the east side, 65 acres of commercial. So there will be growth and changes there. So what I'm offering as far as the city and my personal help as the economic director is, let's work together. I know of grants, the city knows of grants, of cleanup grants, EPA grants. Excuse me, I right now control a brownfield grant of, you know, three or four million dollars that are specific for petroleum uses, but I'm sure there's lots of grants out there that we can do together as two entities to work together to clean up this land and to show and try to find a better use of this opportunity site. As staff said, it's pretty much right in the center of your district. It's almost in the center of our city. It's in the area of some of the highest growth of our city. So basically, I'm here to support this decision, to thank the gun club and then, and the operators for doing a superb job there. They really have. I'm going to, I like the sound of it, so I'm going to miss that a little bit.
10 seconds.
We're here to say, we're, we want to partner with you and support you, and to find a higher and better use for this, for this property. Any questions?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haven. There being no other speaker cards, I will look to my board for their questions and comments.
I have a few questions. These vernal pools, I think they're going to play a pretty important part with the development of this property, and I, I look forward to hearing the report on the vernal pools, because that looks like the lower portion, closest to Douglas. Is that where they are? Laura?
I can answer that, yes. According to the topographical map that we had done there, it does look like it is in the corner of Sunrise and Douglas.
A little sliver, I saw, liquid lake water. But that's something that, certain amount, a portion around that cannot be touched? Is that how it works?
We would have to get a consultant to come in and determine what we can use with that property surrounding it. And obviously, we would look to protect it and go with whatever the requirements are for protecting that vernal pool.
And the, the lead abatement issue, if we do take the recommendation on the district, it still has to be done, right? That, we're looking at possible $800,000?
We will need to do lead abatement. We're doing a recycling program next month, which we typically do every five years, which is, in essence, recycling the surface of the soil, which is required by EPA, and we have been doing that. If we were to abate the property or repurpose it, we would look at options to cap it, meaning that there, you could cap it with concrete, you could cap it with soil, but it will determine what the purpose of that property will be in a future visioning session that we're going to be looking to have at the end of the month. So we can't really say right now what that purpose will be without having that visioning session to determine what the potential property could be in the future.
Yeah. I mean, I feel, I feel sad for an organization that's been around for so long. It's not like they can just move to somewhere else that easy. It's not probably very easy to find a location to set up a shooting range. And I imagine there aren't that many shooting ranges in Northern California.
Actually, we did a little research, and there are 11 shooting centers in the Sacramento region, seven of which are outdoor ranges and four of which are indoor.
If I could interrupt the directors' comments and questions, we've received several extra public comment cards, and I would like to respect perhaps the fact that the public wasn't aware when the cards had to be turned in and allow public comment to continue at this time.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. I'd like to call Michaela Risco to the podium, please.
Avid shooter. The Cordova Shooting Center means a ton to me, just being a female.
So I know that the, the land looks exciting right there to put in another park, and let's work around the vernal pools and use 50% of this, but it's going to cost close to that amount of money to get this facility ready, or this site ready for some sort of park or alternate use. But now you're going to go to something that's not generating income. So maybe something could be worked out with the, the current tenant to where, you know, they can address that and, and maybe come with a happy medium. But I think that we should continue to offer a wide range of activities for people in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krakos.
Next, I'd like to call Chris Freeman to the podium. Following Mr. Freeman will be Chris Flat.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris. I'm 25 years old, and I've lived in Rancho Cordova my entire time I've lived in California, which is since 2008. I've used the Rancho Cordova Shooting Center since I was 18 and bought my first gun, always been into firearms. And one of the things that I appreciate about Rancho Cordova is the wide diversity of recreations that we have here. You know, like people have said before, there's a golf course, there's parks, there's bike paths, and there's a shooting center. You know, there's not very many places in Sacramento to go shooting, you know? And one of the things that I think that's good about the shooting center is that it's a safe place for people to go and shoot their firearms, learn how to use firearms safely. I've taken more classes there than I can count on how to operate firearms safely. I've introduced friends and family to firearms safely at that facility. So the main concern that I have is if we shut the Rancho Cordova Shooting Range down, then people are going to find other places to shoot their firearms, you know? Not everyone is a responsible gun owner, which is unfortunate, but, you know, who's to say that, you know, that old abandoned military base that's off of Zinfandel, people are going to go start shooting out there because it's just a gate to drive around. You know, there's no restrictions to go shooting anywhere out there. The Rancho Cordova Shooting Center provides a safe place for people to shoot firearms, learn how firearms shoot safely, and it's a sport that, you know, people talk bad about, but once you actually get them in there, they're going to realize how much fun it is. You know, my mom, for example, I have an AR-15 rifle. It's the coolest gun ever. My mom was terrified of it. She went and shot it at the Rancho Cordova Shooting Center with the help of one of the range masters, and now she's looking to buy one because she thought it was just the coolest thing in the world. So the diversity of Rancho Cordova because of the Rancho Cordova Shooting Center is something that is important to remember. And like people have said before me, you know, the Rancho Cordova Shooting Center has been there for 30 years, you know, as long as I've been alive. And it's not fair to penalize them because Rancho Cordova is expanding. You know, there's other places in Rancho Cordova District that you can put houses and you can put shopping centers. So having that at the center of our city is something that embraces, almost like, you know, they say the all-American city. Well, part of being American is expressing your Second Amendment rights. And being able to do that safely in a city like Rancho Cordova is something that's unique because there's not very many cities that have a shooting range right, you know, in one of their major intersections. So I ask that you please consider the fact that it is something that is diverse, and it may not be for everybody, but golfing is not for everybody either, and it's something that is important to the citizens of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Next, I'd like to call Chris Flat to the podium. Following Mr. Flat will be Pat Glaze.
Good evening. My name is Chris Flat. I've lived in Rancho Cordova since 2003. I'm a local architect who works downtown. I work mostly on education projects, but it interested me to hear the, the plan tonight, to talk about how the, well, the remediation of the lead and so forth. And a couple of things I just want to bring up is that the cost to remove the lead from this facility, the cost to provide the lead removal report itself, and the, the cost to, to do those items is going to well outweigh the cost to just come in there and, and clean the lead up at the park or if the facility stays open. So there's, there's going to be some serious costs that the district's going to have to encumber in order to turn this into a usable park, who, like some of the other speakers tonight, it doesn't necessarily generate any revenue for the park district, and it provides another facility that the park district does not have at this point. Also, as was mentioned, out of that 73 acres, half of that could not be used, potentially used as a actual park itself. So now you reduced it to even a smaller usable area if it was turned into just a standard Also, anything that you do to that park will need to be fully compliant for ADA compliance and safety, but mostly for ADA compliance. So that cost, whether it's put into the shooting center itself, or whether it's put into a park, is going to be, it's going to, there's going to be a cost on both sides. And while I don't have all the information about the, the plans for the future work out there, you would think that there should be plans for parks to be included in that high-density housing as part of that program and not necessarily outside of its footprint. Thank you very much for your information.
Thank you, Mr. Flat.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Pat Glaze to the podium, please.
I prepared a brief written statement that I'd like to read to the board. My name is Patrick Glaze. I'm president of Marksmanship Consultants. I'm the concessionaire of the Cordova Shooting Center. I want to thank the district for giving my family and my dedicated employees the opportunity to operate the shooting center for almost 38 years. I want to thank our loyal customers, especially those that showed up tonight to show their support for the shooting center. I'm honestly overwhelmed at the outpouring of public support of the range over the last couple of days. The comments on community internet forums have been overwhelmingly favorable to the shooting center. We've had the honor and privilege to serve over 30,000 customers per year, year after year, and those customers shoot about 5 million rounds of ammunition annually. We're happy to provide a safe and controlled environment for people to train and increase their proficiency with firearms. We regularly serve sportsmen, hunters, recreational shooters, law enforcement and security professionals, competitive shooters, and individuals that train for personal protection. I have to say that I was taken by a complete surprise when Administrator Larkin informed me a week ago that the district is, of the district's intent to not renew our agreement beyond the current term. I thought we were doing a great job. We had our best year ever last year. We did almost $3 million in gross revenue. Unfortunately, however, based on the terms of the agreement, the district can choose not to renew the contract term for any reason. If you choose to close the facility, this will be a huge loss for the community and the shooting industry. Our shooting ranges unfortunately are closing at an increasing rate due to encroachment and compatible development and environmental issues that are often significantly undervalued regarding their importance to the community. We've done our best to be good stewards of the facility and the environment. I'm proud that we created a lead cleanup fund about 15 years ago in cooperation with the district and have collected approximately $900,000 through fees from our shooting customers for the benefit of the district to have resources to clean up the facility upon closure. Unfortunately, the district borrowed $500,000 from that fund for other purposes, and to my knowledge, has not replaced those funds, which will make eventual cleanup even more difficult and costly. As long as the shooting center is operating, the lead management fund its, funds itself from the sale of scrap lead to recyclers. Upon closure, as the staff pointed out, the lead remaining on the site becomes hazardous and must be completely cleaned up at huge expense, potentially millions of dollars. I read the staff report prepared by District Administrator Larkin and staff, and I understand much of the district's position regarding incompatibility with surrounding development and the eventual need to repurpose the 73-plus acre site. We knew that this would become an issue eventually. However, I don't believe that we're at that point yet, and I take exception to a couple of the statements in the staff's report regarding the cost to renovate the facility. In the report, the staff states that, bear with me, the combined total project cost for both pistol and rifle range.
I'm sorry, you have gone over your three minutes. Do you have much more to go?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
The combined projected cost to improve the facility is $2 million. I disagree with that number. I think that figure's inflated. I believe that it can be done closer to 1 to 1.2 million, based on my conversations I've had with contractors that are familiar with the project, and I think, bear with I just, I was directly involved with the renovation plan, and these estimates are loosely based on preliminary architectural drawings that could not actually be bid on by on preliminary architectural drawings that could not actually be bid on by licensed contractors. The plan could be scaled back to save significant costs while meeting the renovation objectives, which is to bring the facility up to a safe, modern, and accessible standard." "In closing, I strongly suggest that the district reconsider closing the facility, and I suggest that they renovate the facility at a cost closer to $1 million and allow the facility to operate for an additional five to 10 years. This would enable the district to secure a funding source and a complete plan for final cleanup and collect an additional $183,000 per year from operational revenues. This would be a win-win for the district and the community." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze.
I have no further speaker cards.
Okay, that being the case, we can return to Director's comments and questions. Were you, did you have more, Mr. Sloan?
Now I do.
Okay.
Even if it is 1.2 million to do the update in the facility, do we even have that? Where do we get this money to do it, to keep it open?
The $2 million figure came from a consultant that we had hired to come out and assess that property. Laura has a little more detail on that figure to break out what they recommended we needed to do. Do we have the money, if that is the question, as to renovate it? The answer is no.
But is this, and it's required, these updates are required to keep the facility operating?
Yes.
Yes. Is that what I'm hearing? So this is like a catch-22. We don't have it. I mean, if we're going to do it, we don't have it. How are we going to do this? We can't keep the facility open regardless, it sounds like.
There would be options if you decided tonight that the direction was to continue on with the service out there. We would look to make it a priority project and would possibly look at finance possibilities to make those renovations.
Man. You want, you, do you want to add something?
Just, oh, go ahead.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to clarify. The income that we get from the shooting range is for a year yearly.
Yearly, it's approximately 183,000, which includes rent of 1,500 a month, and then we get a shooting fee of $2 and then a $3.
Rent of 1,500?
We rent the property for 15-
For 73.27 acres?
Yes.
$1,500 a month?
Correct.
So, are you done?
Go ahead.
So if we, if we say we're to choose to continue it for another year, besides the one year that it's ending in the 8th, June, whatever it is, at that point, if we decide that, then we have to come up with 1.2 million at least to fix it. After that?
Once we've been notified of safety concerns out there, we're required to make those changes. And so we are aware of safety concerns on the property. At this time, we would look to make some decisions tonight as to whether or not we want to, you know, invest in that way, or we need to look at possibly repurposing the property.
This is a tough one. Brian, you've lived here a lot longer than I have.
I have, Director Sloan. I've lived here. I've shot there as a kid. I've shot there as an adult. I look at some of the things we're talking about tonight, and I'm the one who plays probably devil's advocate the most around here when it comes to things. There was a slide that Ms. Taylor brought up and said it would take us the 10, 10 years to make $2 million to do that. I'm going to play devil's advocate, and I'm going to, somebody's going to get me for this, but I'm going to say it anyway. What's it going to take us to make back the money on what we do for the pool? How long is that going to take us? You know, we talk about money, this, that, and the other. We have to look at it, and we have to look at it in several different ways, folks. We can't just turn around and say, "Let's close it." Looking at the pictures of the vermin pools, if there's that vermin pool right dead center of that property, like behind, behind the pistol and rifle range, there's the whole center, center of that park. And then now we end up with this pizza slice of an area that is going to be really hard, other than a piece of, piece of grass. And we all know the difficulties we had with the piece of property down the street on Sunrise, where the city just opened a traffic light today on Justinian about putting a park there, and the complaints and the worries we had putting, putting a park right there on Sunrise Boulevard. So I truly want to, I don't want to lose the Shooting Center. It's been there a long time. You know, this is, this is obviously a board decision, but we truly need to look, and I don't think there's enough information, what we have here tonight, to make the decision. And that's, that's my, that's my personal opinion. I think we need to definitely spend some more time because, you know, $800,000, we don't have that $800,000 today. We don't have the 1.2 to make the significant upgrades. Maybe we go back to the concessionaire and we say, "Hey, these are the upgrades we need to do." You know, is there a way we can rewrite this contract? It ends on June 30, 2018. What can we do on that? I mean, if he wants to be there, the community wants him there, there's got to be a way to find, find that, and maybe the people that are out there, you know, are willing to, willing to find some way to help us do that also. You know, there are other grants to close, you know, clean up things. There's got to be grants to keep things open, too. It's my opinion. Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback to what I've learned in my eight years plus being a director is it's not always about the return on investment, although this is a business. In order to keep alive and to grow, we need to make money and generate the income. But sometimes the, what we, what we provide for the community, whether it's a quilting class, or whether it's a shooting range, it's, it's a very important thing to have these facilities and programs available, regardless of how much income we make from it. And like Brian said, I mean, we're going to do our best to fix the, to redo the pools, and you're right. We're not going to, we can't afford, we can't, the public, we're not going to be able to charge them enough to make a profit on the pools. It's basically, it's hopefully if we can somewhat draw some of our money back, that would be great, but I'm leaning towards Brian's idea of looking further into it. The fact that the new developments will require a mound of land to be dedicated to parks is a big, important thing, too. So we're going to have parks right there, and if we're talking about 73 acres, and maybe we can only use 40 of it, 45 of it, then we're, it's not a very, that's not a very, it's not a big giant piece. So I'm sort of like, I'd like, I don't know if other directors want to chime in, but I'd like to-
I'd like to chime in.
Go on.
As soon as you're done.
Okay, I'm done.
I just, I just need to understand a little thing here because, you know, remember, we are stewards of the money of taxpayers. This is not your money. This is not mine. And this is the community, the taxpayers that pay this money for us to do. One of the things I'm trying to understand here, to be fiscally responsible, is to understand that 183,000 for 73.27 acres, prime land, but acres, is 6% of, you said 3 million is your growth last year? That's pretty good money. But when I take the 183 and I start bringing it down to, we're getting 1,500 an acre? Yeah, no, we're getting 1,500 a month on rent for the entire property of 73.27 acres. That's 20 bucks an acre we're getting for rent. Now, the other thing we have to remember, at least I'm thinking here, is we're not going to, we are deciding on whether we are going to stick with that 20 bucks an acre as an income here, or we're deciding that, hey, just because we say we're going to build something that comes from the park, doesn't mean to say it's going to be green park per se. There's got to be a way by which we get our staff to come up with options that will show us the ability to, this is a lot of land. I don't care what you say. 40 acres is quite a lot, even if it's off of the 73. But remember, that doesn't mean to say that whether you build a large community center, a large something, that there's got to be some income that can be drawn in from it. And the other thing is, and so I'm trying to evaluate that on the money side. Now, I understand it's been in operation for 30 years. I also understand that it's not going to be, what, what is surrounding it, you know? We need to understand that the taxpayers that pay are the people that will be surrounding it, that there, and I feel like parks and rec, and we need to be able to be true to the fact that we are here to serve the community. How many thousand people? 150,000? Population? About 115, and all the others that will come in, the 30,000 homes that are going to be built through this. I'm also not thinking that it's a matter of, it's not as simple as, oh, well, it's 2 million. Are we going to do that? Understand that we have to look at it as a bigger strategy. If we're going to go ahead and leave it as a shooting range, we've got to find a way to make more money. That can't be 20 bucks an acre. Second, and if we decide to repurpose it, right, we're not going to do it, we cannot do it alone. So we're going to do it with partnerships. We're going to find people that would participate in it. And at this point, seriously, with what I see going around it, I, I think that there are going to be a lot of families and children and a lot of, of, of traffic there that's not going to be as conducive to having a shooting range right there, Shooting Center right there. Now, I need to tell you, my brother's an avid shooter, and yeah, Pat, I'm sure you know him, but he and his son go there, and they like it, and they do their, their thing there, and they are certified and all this. And in the same process, it's like, wow, it's the nearest outdoor shooting range. Now, I do know that, is it Ione probably is the next closest one, Ione, which is still not that far. But anyway, Ione is another open shooting range. And then you've got the close, the- Slow House. Okay, so all I'm saying here is, I'm trying to, I am trying to look at this as a piece of property that will move towards the future, and the future of the people that will be living around, and the future of the people that probably right now already pay taxes for it. It's not like the pool that is just straight out public. We have a piece of property that someone else is making a lot of money on. Okay, now, we can partner, partner with us in all this, but right now, it's got to make some, some more better sense. So I'm not, I mean, I know it's, I think maybe you're talking to probably someone who I know it's been there a long time. I know it's been done the same thing, but you need to understand, from my point of view, that times change, and the, the community that surrounds it change. So I'm really just, I'm trying to understand this. I'm definitely, you know, that I'm considering a repurposing because I think that that would allow us a lot more opportunity to make it, bring in a little more money, provide programs that were more conducive to what it is surrounding, surrounding. That's my, my, my part here. And I'm not, I'm like, I'm not really too happy that, that that's, that's all we're making on this 73.27 part.
I need to chime in and piggyback on that comment. I must admit, my eyebrows were raised when I heard that that facility brought in $3 million gross last year. When the contract we have for that property is that any maintenance or improvement project in excess of $1,500 is to be borne at the district's cost, that it seems disproportionate to me, the amount of revenue that we receive versus the amount of revenue that it generates. And I think we need to be clear that this is not a district program, that the district has leased this property all along to a for-profit business. So it is not a program offered by the district for the community, the way the pool is. It's a completely different type of project for the district. So I would say, without talking about whether or not to renew that lease as a standalone, but that if that lease is renewed, I would hope that it would be at much more favorable terms to the district, given all of the financial responsibility borne by the district in that contract. That contract looks very uneven to me in terms of who's responsible for paying the maintenance and upkeep of that property versus who is collecting the revenues. And I'm going to let that one rest for a moment, and I know Director Danzel has something else to say.
I do agree with you, and that's why I said, you know, we have to work with the concessionaire to figure this out. But part of, part of my problem is turning around and saying, "Let's close it," because the second we kill this deal here, we don't have a plan moving forward. This just says, "Let's close it." There's nothing in this piece of paper on this, with this, right here, that says, "Community Center, this." It says, "Let's close it and clean it. Then we'll look at it." And that's, that's what we need to, need to look at here.
I think if I'm not mistaken, what it's saying is not, "We're closing it." What it's saying is that the contract, the contract ends-
Correct.
-in June of 2018.
Just over a year from now.
And per the contract, all we need to do is give a six-months notice.
I agree.
And what we're doing at this point is trying to be, well, good to our concessionaire as well, as trying to give staff enough time to understand, you know, how and what can be done. I think it would be premature to, to try and do plans on it when you haven't really decided whether you were going to close it or not-
But if we do this-
-and then get the concessionaire to understand it.
There's nothing in here that says we're even going to go out for an RFP and talk to this gentleman about redoing his contract. We're saying we're going to kill his contract on June 30, 2018. That's all we're saying with this, which means when we kill it, we're done with it. If, if this was written differently-
Like?
If it was written, say, "Hey, we're going to stop your contract, but in six months, we're going to go out and look for a new RFP. We're going to have him rebid. We're going to have other people rebid on it so we can try and get a better contract," it's a different story. But us turning around right now with the way this is written, the way I'm reading it, is we kill this project, June, or July 1, 2018, we start this cleanup process.
So it's a two, two-pronged thing, which I think I'm understanding you saying. One is to decide on stopping, you know, waiting a while, trying to see whether we should continue or close the contract, and the other one is to be able to see about the, what do you call this, the re-
The potential of what this property can bring us. We're talking, I mean, we're talking-
As a, as a shooting range, is that what you're saying?
Either a Shooting Center, a Community Center, what we can do with it.
Can we do one at a time here instead of a back and forth between two directors?
So that, but I'm just, that's, that's my opinion, and that's why I'm standing where I'm standing on this one, so.
Does it make sense to defer action on this item for, for instance, an upcoming visioning session that's planned? Because there's some, something to be said for the fact that we're not really offering any alternative vision for this at this time, and-
I'll ask the clerk respectfully, do they need to take an action to-
Revisit it?
Continue the item?
They would have to make an action to continue the item.
They would have to make an action to continue the item.
So yes, there is a visioning workshop planned for May thirty-first, where your concerns that you're saying that if not this, then what? Those discussions were to be had at that meeting. We were hoping to have that prior to this meeting, but we were not able to have a board meeting prior. So the timeline, if that is what you choose to do and make that decision, we could offer up those proposals or suggestions at that time.
I think it, I think that that is doable. I think that if we were to continue this to the next meeting, again, like anything else, I know very well that there was, there is a concern to do, respectfully, there's a concern to do any visioning and start a talk without respectfully giving our concessionaire the idea that this is what we're trying to figure out. And so from my point of view, I thought that if we were to continue it, after all, our contract says you have up to six months prior. So I mean, it's not, you know, it's not like we're pushed because it says you have a year. So we can continue it.
Chair Lineback, I would like, I would request that we continue item F five of this board package to a, May thirty-first is the date you're giving us? Administrator Larkin?
There is a visioning workshop for the board to not only discuss this option, but there's also a very strict timeline associated with us negotiating new development. We're developing a region-wide district mapping, meaning that we need to have that tool to negotiate with future developers. So the need for us to make a decision on this, the need for us to have a decision made relatively quickly would be a way for us to determine what future district assets we're placing district-wide, instead of just neighborhood by neighborhood.
Wouldn't you need to know the actual acreage that would be usable before you could even go to that, sit at that table?
We would have to do further studies on it. As I was saying, we're in the middle of doing district-wide asset mapping. And so that was basically with all the new development coming in, we want to make sure that we're placing all of our future community centers, aquatic centers, you know, amenities that we're having in the district, district-wide, instead of just reacting as the developers come forward and we're good negotiating in that way. It's just a very good planning tool for the board to be aware of, you know, strategically where we're looking to place for future assets in the district.
I would suggest that the motion not be that we table this item to the May thirty-first visioning session, but that we table it to either June or July, that we have the visioning session that talks about the district as a whole and not, you know.
I make a motion that we continue item F five to the July board meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
So we can have some information, some of the lines filled in that were the blanks?
The board will have to give the staff direction as to what lines you're referring to.
The actual use, acreage that can be developed.
Yeah, we'll have more information. We would have to actually hire a consultant to get specific on that. But it's a rough estimate of, based on the topographical map, a rough estimate was given as to probably forty percent would be protected lands on that property. So we could use that as a general estimation out of that seventy-acre parcel there.
Chair Lineback, I request that District Administrator gives us till the end of the month, at least, if not the first week in June, to give those to you for staff direction, if that works.
Works for me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Let's now move back to item F two.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item F two is to authorize the district administrator to execute a park use agreement with the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Executive Committee, a subcommittee of the Cordova Community Council, for the use of Hagan Community Park for the twenty seventeen Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Celebration and approve district contributions to the event. And with that, I will turn it over to Brian Hendricks.
Good evening, board again. We'll let them go out for a second. So regarding the park use agreement between the Cordova Recreation Park District and the Cordova Community Council, this is pretty similar to the agreements that has been approved in the past. Just a couple of things I just wanted to touch base on. Due to at the Hagan Park on June twenty-third and twenty-fourth this year, there is a car show that's going to be out there. So the community council will have access, the date has changed a little bit, but they will have access of using the park for setup, starting June twenty-sixth at seven AM and then tearing down by July eighth at five PM. We've taken to make sure that we have canceled any of the sport fields so we don't have any activities happening during that time. There is one topic on paragraph two under use of facilities that will need to be amended and on July third, it says four o'clock is when they would start commencing on the activities. It's actually going to be noon. So that will need to be changed in noon. Excuse me?
Four o'clock is correct for July.
Four o'clock is correct?
Yes.
Because when I looked on the website, it says noon.
Well, that's an error.
So still keep it four o'clock? Okay, thank you. So we don't need to amend it, so we'll keep that at four o'clock. So, and then once again, we will have in-kind services of approximately fifteen thousand dollars. One thing that our current staff is doing is looking at our utilities and billings for the year and won't have it for this year, but we're doing a study to see what it costs for utilities and that could be something that we could add for next year of what it costs to actually have electricity during that Fourth of July celebration. But unless you have any other questions, it's pretty standard to what has been approved in the past.
Chair Lineback, may I ask a question for clarification?
Sure.
So the contract was not amended regarding July third, but were the dates changed regarding June twenty-sixth?
No, no, everything in here is correct. What I would just inform you is the dates were a little bit different last year, but everything that's in this report is correct.
Do we have any questions or comments? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move, I'll move the, that we authorize the district administrator to execute a park use agreement with the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Executive Committee, a subcommittee of the Cordova Community Council for the use of Hagan Park for the twenty seventeen Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Celebration and approve the district's contributions to the event.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback? And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item F three.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item F three is to authorize the district administrator to execute a three-year professional services agreement with Business Computer Services of Sacramento in an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars per year of agreement for support and maintenance of district-wide information technology services and equipment. And I will turn it over to Becca Niles.
So we are bringing in front of you today, we've decided in speaking with Patrick, Administrator Larkin and Mr. Gudell, we sat down and we spoke about having going from one year into a three-year contract so we can provide some IT stability. We've had a little upheaval over the last couple of years and we'd like to offer the district the ability to have that stability of having the same vendor in for the whole entire time. They've really gotten to know our needs and have been wonderful at working with us and responding to these little emergencies that we've had pop up from time to time. One of our biggest achievements was that in the first year that they were here, we've actually gotten Hagan connected to Comcast cable or Comcast Internet. And that has been a huge connectivity boom for Hagan. Now we just need to tackle new computers for them so they can benefit from the faster internet. This contract does go up seventy-two dollars per year compared to what we paid in our first year and that is the, in the anti-spam, the malware, ransomware protection software that they have purchased and have swapped up to. So I'm happy to entertain any questions if you have some.
Quick question. If we are going to commit ourselves to a three-year contract, presuming we'd like stability, what is our out if they are not performing as we need them to? I mean, they may be performing, but not to the standard. Do we have, do we have penalties to pay? If we had to cancel or change or what, or get out of this contract?
There are no penalties written into the contract if we do sever it early. But their performance and over the last year and the fact that they have consistently gone above and beyond and are incredibly responsive, it's actually not a concern of mine that their customer service level is going to fall.
Yeah, but just in case, you know, we have to just be ready for the fact that I'll be responsible here. We just want to, I just want to understand that should something come up and they, we decide, or staff decides, you know what? This is not working as well for us, we can get something cheaper or whatever, or we can get better, what, we can just terminate the contract like that?
Yes, the contract, our contract that is drafted as part of your board package, that is the CRPD contract, is the contract itself. The supporting document is what their maintenance and service plan is.
So I.
So the contract, the CRPD contract supersedes the maintenance and service plan.
I understand. So it says the contract documents, it says the work, the contract price, and it says the term that we're committing to.
Correct. And if at any time that they are not fulfilling their bargain, their plan, if they fall outside of that plan, we can't sever ties.
No, actually, our contract does not have an early termination clause. Theirs does.
Yes.
Theirs has a termination clause of thirty-day termination notice of contract.
So there is, thank you.
Sorry, I was thinking about our contract.
And the price change is only with respect to the, what was it?
Buyware.
It's the anti-spam malware and ransomware protection.
So other than that, it's a continuation of the pricing we have already enjoyed?
Yes. The maintenance and service plan also locks us into a discounted hourly rate for projects outside of the scope of the maintenance and service plan.
Any other questions or, okay, does someone want to make a motion?
Chair, I'll make the motion. I move the district authorize the district administrator to execute a three-year professional services agreement with Business Computer Services of Sacramento in an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars per year of the agreement for support and maintenance of district-wide informational technology services and equipment.
Thank you, Director Sloan. And a second by Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to item F four.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item F four is to authorize the district administrator to sign the memorandum of understanding between artist Gina Rossi and Leadership Rancho Cordova for the bike rack art project. And I will turn it over to Laura Taylor.
Good evening again, Chair Lineback and member to the board. This is a fun project. The, and we are requesting that the board authorize the district administrator to sign the memorandum of understanding between artist Gina Rossi and the Leadership Rancho Cordova for the installation of bike rack, for a bike rack art project. So the Leadership Rancho Cordova Class eleven has chosen to install bike racks that are actually public artwork throughout the city. They've requested the permission to install bike racks in both Hagan Park and Village Green Park as part of that whole project. One of our own park employees, Martin Fonseca, he is in the program this year and so the collective group has approached the district to install the bike racks. And we've worked with the class as well as the artist to review those designs, approve those designs. Jerry, myself and Christina, we all took a site visit out to see some of the artists' other installations in the city of Sacramento. And we feel very good that these art projects will also be durable bike racks. So it is on an accelerated schedule. The Leadership Rancho Cordova intends to fabricate the bike racks by the end of the school year, by May twenty-fifth, because they are using students to assist in the fabrication of these bike racks. And then they want to install them by June eighth. So we've approved two locations for the bike racks, one in community, in Hagan Community Park and one in Village Green. And we're looking very much forward to continuing these types of partnerships in the future. Now, this is kind of a new thing for the park district, at least since I've been here, where the bike racks serve a dual purpose. It's park, it's public art as well as a functional piece of park furnishing. So with that in mind, it's, we are recommending the memorandum of understanding to clarify what the expectations are between the parties because sometimes the concept of public art brings about different expectations than if it was simply a bench or, you know, another bike rack or something like that. So we drafted the MOU, the Leadership Rancho Cordova Program Representative, which Diane Rogers, who is the executive director of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, she's here if you should have any questions to ask about this. Thank you very much for being here through this long meeting tonight. Anyhow, so there's a minor fiscal impact to the district, which is the park services will provide some installation assistance and ongoing maintenance of the racks. The racks themselves, the cost of the racks are being sponsored by multiple private entities in locations throughout the Rancho Cordova. So that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
A question. Well, being art, there's sometimes more upkeep that's involved and I don't know, the durability. So like as they get banged up by bicycles and scratched and scraped, is this something that the district is responsible for fixing?
Yes, and the purpose for meeting with the artist and touring some of her facilities in other parks was to ascertain the durability of those products. And so she powder coats them, they're, it's a quarter-inch thick steel with large tubular steel support posts around them. And although there is some free-form artist license that takes place in the final putting the pieces together that we have to allow for, we feel, we feel very good that these are going to be durable pieces of equipment. And, but the MOU is there for the purposes of spelling out what happens if there's vandalism to the point that it can't be reasonably repaired? And so that's one reason for the MOU.
Another question would be, do you think they'll be attractive to, for kids to want to play on?
Possibly.
Is that something that we need to be aware of? I don't know.
Well, I can tell you that actually.
Sometimes you have things that are sticking out that I don't, I would hate to fall on and so I just worry about certain things like that.
So.
There was a sculpture in Davis of a person pointing down the road and it was about eye level to where kids were riding their skateboards by. So they were actually, we're told to remove. So they were actually, were told to remove that projectile that was coming off the person's arm. So, I mean-
Well, you, the, the artist's name is Gina Rossi, and she does have a website. And I can, I'm happy to forward that to you.
Okay.
Is there a way that we could pull that up now? And my, my question is, you, you said Hagan and, and Village, where are we, where are we talking within these parks? Are we, I mean, are we talking near the pavilion, are we talking near the front gate of Hagan? Are we talking by the pool? And say, say with Village, I, I mean-
So at Hagan Park, it would be on an existing concrete slab that was placed with the intention of putting a bike rack there. And it's, um, right in front of the, um, the large gathering pavilion. So that's an excellent place. The, for the Village Green, I'm going to defer that question to Christina.
So in Village Green, it's also, it would be, um-
I'm sorry, can you approach the microphone, please?
Um, so, on, in Village Green, it would also be on an existing concrete slab where the current bike rack is. And the intention would be to take that current bike rack, which is a kind of standard U-
U.
Um, and bring it to Lincoln Village where we do not have a bike rack.
And we've got lots of kids going in there every day with their bikes, and they're throwing them on the ground because, so is, and I'm gonna ask Diane, because this is under, under Leadership Rancho Cordova, if they come up with more money, can we get another one for, for Lincoln Village? I'm, I'm asking that, me personally, these guys, obviously, management's gotta figure that out, whether we want one there, but, you know, there's so much in, in that park that, you know-
Before she answers, I just wanted to, um, recognize the question about how this program is going to go forward and, and lessons learned, I guess. We are looking to pilot this-
Okay.
And meaning that we're gonna test this art, uh, functional art, I should say, in Hagan and at the Village, um, Village Green, uh, Park. If it is a successful program after six months of assessment, we would look to potentially install future art amenities-
Okay.
-in the park. So we really wanna be conscious of potential maintenance costs, uh, damage, things that may be, um, incurred costs that we were not expecting. So we really truly are, uh, piloting this type of, uh, new amenity in our parks.
The, the reason I ask is because I have a feeling it'd be cheaper if leadership has to pay for them than if we have to pay for them. So I was just trying to go big picture. Cause I've been, I've gone through leadership, and I know what, what funds those guys raise and how, how they have to do it. So, so maybe, maybe if that becomes part of that, maybe you can help us with that artist get a discount because we already have some of her work.
I, I think we could probably post it under the alumni of the Leadership Rancho Cordova. Figure something along those lines out. But yes, the, uh, the district administrator mentions, we talked about this as a piloting project, answering the questions you have about durability, um, is it aesthetically appealing, all those kinds of things. And I know, and that's, as you well know, that have been through the program, part of this is the experience of going through this process, um, being able to do that. And with regard, Mr. Sloan, to your question, um, the two designs that we have for these two particular locations, um, the one at Hagan is currently designed to be a raft with, um, oars, but the oars are pointing down, so they're not part, not up and exposed so that it would hurt-
The tires would go in between the oars, kind of a thing?
Yeah, it would be, the, the really cool thing about this is there are five locations, but there's actually eleven bike racks that are being placed. So for example, use the example of the Veterans Village, it's actually gonna be three units making up an American flag where you can park a total of six or eight bikes over across the three units. So it's not just one location. The, the class felt very strongly, they wanted to have at least six to eight bikes being able, cause two bikes is sort of like, what's the big point?
Right.
So the idea was six to eight bikes being able to be located at each one. And that at, um, at the Capital Village, Capital Green, um, the idea is trees, but it's encircled, so that it's not like you can, kids can do anything, so I'm not gonna go there. But, um, you know, the idea is that it's protected by a rim around the tree. And we wanna match intentionally the green that's in the cement, um, at the park there to match the colors that would be on the powder coating. So it would be complementary. So it's not like a, a mauve and then the rest of those primary colors are there. So.
Gotcha.
And if you'd like some, uh, the, the artist has worked very closely with the class, and I am, so the idea of the pricing and everything, we have a pretty good solid idea of what that is. And I do know that they are trying to factor in extra dollars for maintenance, anything that's extra supposed to be put towards maintenance.
Thanks ma'am.
Can I ask anything else?
I, I heard, um, mention of multiple private entities?
Yes, ma'am, the-
Tell us how that work will work.
The idea is they put together, uh, a sponsorship package-
Uh-huh.
-so that, um, different entities could contribute towards it. Um, and, um, I'm gonna, I know for sure that the Hagan Park one is partially sponsored by Rancho Cordova Travel and Tourism. And so in the ground, not on the park, but in the ground, there'll be a small plate that has whoever sponsored or supporting the, the, the rack. So-
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, you know, just wanna make sure that we're, we're understanding of, of the openness with which to put private entities in and how it's going to be put in.
Right, it would be a logo, it wouldn't be like, you know, it's not, I can have a banner across and things. And then we'll also absolutely acknowledge the role that the district has played and, and the cooperation we've had and part of the press release and the other entities they're having. And so I'll extend an invitation, if I may, on the graduation day, which hopefully all of you alumni that are here in the room, which there are several, um, um, at the Children's Center, uh, Children's Museum, um, will be unveiling the first one, we hope, to be, uh, in front of the children on the, on June eighth. So I encourage you to come by and see it. It's gonna be gears, kinda-
Wow.
I, yeah, it's just gonna be cool. So-
Sounds good.
Any other questions that I can offer? Okay, thank you very much for your time, appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, um-
So we'll move-
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that we authorize the district administrator to sign the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between artist Gina Rossi and Leadership Rancho Cordova for the bike rack art project.
A second.
Thank you Vice Chair Reyes, and thank you Director Danzel for seconding. And roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye.
And Secretary Yearwood is absent.
At this time, we're gonna take a brief, uh, break, and we will reconvene in the next ten minutes. It, the time is-
Eight thirty.
Thirty-two. We're opening this meeting at eight forty-seven PM, and with a note that Director Reyes has yet to return to the dais. Um, but we're gonna move forward with our quorum. And the next item is board member reports. And it looks like there were no trainings, so perhaps we could hear from you, Director Sloan.
Happy to report, a gracious-looking audience. Hi, everybody. April twenty-fifth, I attended the Breka General Meeting, as did our, uh, our glorious administrator, Patrick Larkin, who gave a nice presentation in front of, uh, an audience of about fifty, sixty people, I think, approximately. Uh, Director, Chair Lineback was there.
Right.
And our, our astute Inez Reyes was there. It went, it was a nice, a nice little, uh, taste of, uh, of a Pat, call it, you know? We got people, people got to meet him and see who he was, put a face to the, uh, person. On May second, I attended the special board meeting about the health benefits, and that was, uh, beneficial. That we came up with some, uh, good solutions for the district. That same, that same evening, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association meeting, which we talked about, uh, sports fields renovations and how they still have ten thousand dollars to spend on some sports field renovations, which could include district property if the, if the field, if this, if the facility's on that. They did another, we're talking about a future event that might affect the district, and that was a sports-arama, possibly at Hagan. Just something that they're, you know, they're kicking over because, as you remember, the kid, last Kids Day, they basically did a, um, a theme on sports. And they've got, they were turning down people for wanting to set up booths. And so this is a very, very, very sport-oriented district region, and it brought a lot of kids and people into Pagan because of that, that, that plug there. So they're talking about some type of a sports-arama, which would, I think would, it would fit. So it just depends on when it would be and, and the actual scope of the event. So it's just something that they, I think would be a win-win for the district and the Also, um, on May sixth, it's not on my, not on my, not written down, but I did go by the yard sale at Neil Orchards, um, um, Senior Center. And it was, it was a nice layout, and some good vendors out there, people were out there, had all their nice, uh, nice wares. Numbers were a little bit down, but I, I found out that there were lots and lots of yard sales that day. It was a beautiful day. And I think Mather, the whole area in Mather, had a big community-wide yard sale there. And so there was lots of different places where people were kinda going to. But I, I think it was very successful. I, I, I think the vendors got at least their, their money back that they paid for to, to be there. And part of a yard sale is meeting people and talking and having fun. Also, let's see, May ninth, at Einstein Middle School, I attended the Rosemont Community Association General Meeting, which is basically opened up to, um, uh, Assemblyman Cooley, uh, Supervisor Natoli, uh, pop officers, uh, our, our district was represented there at the table, and people were talking to Patrick and meeting him. I was sort of hoping that Pat could come up and say words, but I guess, not being on the agenda, I guess it was hard to get you, you know? Were you, were you even introduced as your, I think he introduced you, did he?
Uh, I believe the introduce CRPD was, uh, um, in the house.
Right, yeah, in the house. Yeah, we were in the house. Okay, and, um, let's see. On May thirteenth, it was a busy day. We had Meet the Machines out at Mather, which, I mean, I, I just loved that event, and it was a very, a well-attended event. I think I spoke to Jason, and he estimated that, I think that you estimated, there was close between two and three thousand people there. And, uh, so, and I took some great photographs. And, uh, and my son was, my son's eleven, and there seemed to be a lot, not a lot of things that were gonna keep him there, but then he saw that, uh, the, uh, the tombstone, uh, battle bot that was the grand champion. And this, that really drew his attention, and he, he really, that's something that we might wanna think about, too, some type of a class where kids make robots and have a little competition, that would, I mean, that would be kinda fun. But he just really enjoyed, then he, he goes home and Googles it, and there's this guy, there's the machine. He poses with pictures next to, I think his name is Ray Billings, and, uh, he, you know, told us how much it cost to make that robot, twelve thousand dollars, he said. Yeah. Partnership. He's got sponsors, too, to help him out a little bit. Um, and also then that night, of course, one of our, uh, signature events at, uh, Capital Village Park was our I-Fest. And it was just beautiful. Weather, perfect, uh, the, it got a little cold at the end, I had to put a jacket on. But, um, and it, we had to cut some of the act short, I, I noticed that that was happening. But it was just, it was fantastic, there was a lot of people out there. We even had a camel on our property. A camel was there, yeah. And, and an alligator, a huge alligator. This guy was, uh, you know, embracing without anything around his mouth, nothing, just this, I go, what the heck? And so that was a very, very, uh, busy, busy, uh, day, and that's my report.
Thank you Director Sloan, Director Danzel.
Good evening Chair Lineback Board. Um, I don't have anything written down because I was not sure I was gonna make Meet the Machines, but, uh, cause I had some other family obligations that day, but I did. Um, I have not missed one yet. Um, I think the first one was a few years ago, actually on my birthday. Um, so it's just been, my, my family keeps reminding me, it is my birthday tradition, I will go to Meet the Machines as long as I'm here. Fun, fun event, um, you know, get to, get to see some great motorcycles with some great paint jobs, and then you get his. And then, um, no, um, you know, sta, staff gets involved, uh, was able to get, you know, so, some of his, his friends involved. It's great, great to see, um, how the kids can, you know, turn the lights on on a tractor and leave them on all day, and we've gotta jumpstart the tractor to get it out. Um, you know, the battle bots were great, the, the segways, for, for me, being a campus monitor at Cordova, there's a special needs, um, young man that, uh, don't, we don't see him do a lot at, at, at school, you know, he's very to himself and everything, and never, I've never seen him this school year have a smile on his face. And, uh, he got to, uh, get on a segue, and he had the biggest smile. And, uh, got to meet his mom, and that, that was really thrilling to me. So it's great to see, uh, how the little things, how a segue can make a sixteen-year-old kid just beam. Um, it's one of my, my favorite events. It's definitely, you know, my, my highlights in this community, you know, obviously for me, Fourth of July's a big one. Um, I, I put a lot of, you know, blood, sweat and tears into that one, and same with Christmas I have in the past, but, um, I work those events, and they, they mean a lot to me. But, uh, Meet the Machines, I don't physically participate in. Um, I get to be a participant, and, uh, I feel that the district does a fantastic job with that, um, bringing every, every piece of machinery out there from fire trucks and ambulances and military vehicles and cranes. It's just incredible what, what, you know, I can't think of what we haven't brought out there other than, you know, gi, giving a cement truck and, you know, letting kids play with cement, but something tells me there's issues with that. You know, letting kids play with cement. But, you know, it's just incredible to see how, how this district can pull, pull together an event that brings so many families together and, um, from all ages, you know, it's, it's supposed to be a kids' event, but I think sometimes the parents have just as much fun at those events as the kids. And, uh, you know, it was good to see board members out there and, you know, uh, spend time with them, got, got a chance to sit with the district administrator for a minute and other staff. And I know they were handing out flyers like crazy, and I, I really appreciate the staff for all that they do on that event. So thank you.
Thank you Director Danzel, Vice Chair Reyes.
Yes, I was a little sad I didn't get to do the Meet the Machines, cause I really liked that. I think, to tell you frankly, I think that, uh, like you said a few years ago, it's a new project, but it is really the best for, uh, Cordova Wreck and Park District. I think it'll grow and it could manage itself to be quite like a Fourth of July, you know? Sparks. But anyway, it's always good, and I really love attending it, cause it's so nice to see everyone. The young girls that go onto these machines, sit down and feel, it's just awesome when you see them, uh, get on. Last time, they had, I don't know whether it was last year, they had this like hot air balloon, but the winds were going too, too strong, so I couldn't get on. I got in it, but we couldn't lift off. Anyway, that was great, but, um, unfortunately, I was coming back from Aloha, so that was okay. Um, I want to tell you that I really was impressed by the board me, by the special board meeting we had with the employee benefits renewal. Staff did an excellent job, not only of, um, of working hard for our employees, but also educating us, and I really appreciated that. And, you know, it, it's, it's interesting, we say, oh, we hear it every time, but it just gets clearer and clearer and clearer, so that was well done. Uh, the Breka meeting, I had an opportunity to attend, and I'm sure, uh, Director Sloan, you probably told them that we did have, uh, a lot of very interesting, we had Donna Toly there, and you, and from the District Administrator's Office, Ann Schubert was there. Um, and they had these pop officers that were there that would be really neat to have a lot tighter relationship with here. Uh, and, um, I think there was, I mean, Jeff Wall, um, and then Tommy Riggins for CHP Traffic Enforcement Dispatch. And they were like, hey, just give me a call. So I thought that was really good. That was an awesome, um, homeowners, a, a community neighborhood association. I thought that they're, they're really doing something right. They did give us this hotline for Sac County that they said we'd get a response in forty- They did give us this hotline for Sack County that they said we'd get a response in 48 hours. You should get a response if you call in for any, uh, concerns or anything that you felt was not right. And so that hotline number is 916-382-8633. That seems to be where they say, call that number and you should get a response in, within 48 hours. There was a lot of education on, on, um, how to have and ensure a safe environment. So I think, um, it was very interesting and I think it was a really good meeting and I was glad to be there. And, you know, they had Donna Toly, I mean, county supervisor there. And so it, you know, it was really, uh, I think it was really a very important meeting to see important people show up. I would love to see that happen in all our other, uh, home, uh, neighborhood associations and, you know. And I think we should be a part of that because they are in our parks. And of course, our very own district administrator, Patrick Larkin, was there introducing himself and, you know, and, um, and telling them all about the Measure J and for senior discounts, et cetera. So, you know, you did a good presentation there, Patrick. I was proud to be there as CRPD. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Reyes. For my report, um, I, I won't repeat very much. I also attended the Butterfield Riviera East Community Association meeting on April 25th. And I, uh, thought that Administrator Larkin's, um, talk or introduction went very well. I think people were happy to meet him and see him and it felt like there was a good vibe in the room. The special board meeting regarding employee benefits renewal, I was really, um, impressed, as Vice Chair Reyes noted, with the, uh, staff report, the level of knowledge, um, the ability to ask, you know, a lot of detailed answer, rather, a lot of detailed questions. And, um, I feel bad for, um, Andrea because I feel like we ask her the same questions every year, but she's always able to answer them, even though we don't remember them from the year before. And I did also attend the Rosemont Community Association Annual Meeting. I think perhaps the reason our administrator was not invited to speak is because he had just spoken to their monthly meeting the month before. So, um, but it was nice to see the district represented there. Even so, and, um, I think some of these larger community associations, you know, have access because they also had, um, Donna Toly there and, uh, CHP and pop officers and, uh, oh, I don't know, they had all kinds of, um, information there too. SMUD was there, California American Water, you know, it's a good resource for neighbors if they know about these associations. They can learn a lot about how their community works and how to get their community to work for them. And then I also attended Meet the Machines on May 13th. You know, I, I will just say, I was no less impressed by that event than has been already expressed by my fellow directors. It's a fabulous event and who knew?
Yeah.
Mr. Hendricks, who knew?
AC, AC DC?
AC DC. And that is my report. So, uh, now we will move on to, uh, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
So the only, um, item is in the communications section, we are looking for two volunteers from the board to sit on the judging for the Instagram project. Vivian, do you have a minute maybe to give a little bit more description on what the role will be for the volunteers that are potentially the director will appoint?
Absolutely. Good evening Board. Once again, we are holding another Instagram contest, which ends on May 31st. We had a successful run, uh, last year and we're running another one this year. And the winners will be in the spring/summer 2018 Rec Guide. The winner from the last contest will be in the fall/winter, the upcoming Rec Guide. So really excited about that. And once again, we'd like to ask two volunteers to serve as judges for the contest.
I'd be, I'd be happy to do it again.
Thank you Director Sloan. And thank you Director Danzel, you have your two volunteers.
Thank you very much.
Is that, are we able to use that image, that little kid with the basketball court? Use that as a type of advertisement or?
That image belongs to the district.
It does?
Yes, it is, it does now belong to the district, yes. We can use it any way we'd like. If it's for advertising, I would, I would still get permission from, uh, the, because there is a, a minor in the photo. But for any district business, it belongs to us and will more than likely be the cover photo of the next Rec Guide.
Thanks.
Okay, do you want to?
So I can go right into my administrator's report, staff report? So, um, you've mentioned a lot of the public appearances I've made throughout the last month and I appreciate your support at those meetings. It was fun to see our board at the Rosemont and Breka meetings, uh, so we could get out there and have the public know who I am, share a little laughs and I was let off the hook pretty easily compared to some of the other presenters, so I appreciated that. There's a lot of love for us out there in the community for CRPD, so it was great to see. A couple other things were, um, this past month, Laura, Taylor and I, were able to go down to the South Gate Recreation and Park District's new aquatics project that they're working on. They're in construction. Laura and I got our hard hats on and were given a tour from the general manager and the project manager. It was good to see kind of their layout of how they're doing the newest project in this region. We got some information on their programming, their pricing, uh, their layout. So it was just a really great, uh, opportunity for us to see a very local pool being developed and constructed in there. Lessons learned along the way, which will help us potentially save some money from things that they've already encountered and we don't have to repeat those things. Information technology mentioned earlier, a huge accomplishment during the week of April 10th, Hagan Community Center and Park Services Corp. Yard at Hagan Park. Were connected to Comcast Internet, giving both buildings a faster and more stable internet connection. This has been something in the works for years and I was proud to see that that project got completed. We had our Measure J Senior Discount Workshop. Vivian was amazing to go out to the Senior Center on May 15th and she had about eight, seven, eight folks that were interested in getting us some assistance on filling out their applications and submitting them for the discount. We have been receiving several senior discount applications in the past month. The close date is May 31st. In human resources, we have been in recruitment. As you were introduced to Brandy Dion, our Recreation Supervisor 2, we have been, uh, closing out the recruitment for the Recreation Coordinator, who will be mostly focused on aquatics, but will have some responsibilities in leisure contract management. That person, an offer has been made and the announcement will be made at the next meeting. In the golf course, um, that we had some projects that we did. Due to the weather and the, the winds, we had some damage done to the netting closest to the parking lot. So those netting projects were completed, as well as the shade canopies, which was a great accomplishment for us to get those done for safety. At the Recreation Department, we had a surprise visit on April 19th from Congressman Omnebera. And he had heard great things about our Green Thumbs program and decided to join the seniors and, uh, help serve their lunch that day. We had an amazing event at the Ha, uh, Easter event. Hopping and Hunting at Hagan was a big success. Storm damage is completed for the most part. We had the Kids' Day that we participated in. We had a great spot at Kids' Day this year. We promoted Meet the Machines, we had a piece of equipment out there. In Parks Planning, uh, they're preparing the Giraffe District-wide Facility Distribution Plan, like I had mentioned earlier in the meeting. The review and the visioning workshop is coming up on May 31st and that work will be demonstrated at that point for us to kind of chew on and see what we can do in terms of placing future assets and facilities for the district. Below is a new section that you had asked for in a previous meeting about grants and the updates on those grants. So this will be something that we're going to provide at every meeting. It will be basically listing the grants that we've applied for, the, um, status of that grant and whether it was awarded, yes or no. So you'll have an update on that on a monthly basis, which is a nice addition for communicating to the board. Heron Landing Park, the estimated completion month for construction project is in July. However, we're looking to, um, open the possible, looking to do a park opening due to a maintenance period in October. Fetish Field Park, um, the sidewalk project and monument and sign project is completed, which is exciting. There is our invitation page on the back, uh, which lists off some of the events that we've, uh, already hosted prior to this meeting. Those were things that came out. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions or comments, I will be happy to answer them.
Yes, Chair Lineback. My question for District Administrator Larkin. With, uh, with the visit to the South Gate Recreation and Park District, was this pool project a, it says new, so it's a brand-new pool?
It is a brand-new pool. They had, um, they're financing the project and they basically, um, had been collecting developer fees for quite some time in order for them to facilitate that. The complex includes a spray ground, a pool, like a zero-depth entry pool, uh, and a competitive pool, along with a community center and aquatics buildings and large parking area around it. It has been in the works for several years. I believe the initiation of the project was about 12 years ago. And they are finally, um, shovels in the ground, it's looking really great. They've learned some lessons in this project, which they've shared with us and I'm, I'm looking forward to having us get going with ours. And it's a, just a great benchmark. It's literally right in our backyards and they were willing to share their information and lessons learned and I think it'll be valuable for us as we move forward with our pool project as well.
And their contractor, I mean, and the whole architect or whatever?
Yeah, they've shared with us their architect that they had hired, uh, and their construction. And we actually had gotten a tour from that, um, construction manager and talked a little bit more about the details of their project.
How much is their project?
I believe it was 16 million, but that includes the community center and those buildings. It's brand-new.
That's brand-new.
Brand-new, it was nothing there prior.
Yeah, I'm hoping that, I'm sure all the board members here are hoping that we could come up with a plan on how we are going to proceed with our pool at Hagan, uh?
Yeah, so the, um, the plan is for us to come in Ju, in June with, um, a request for qualifications for an architect to get the pool project going again. And those two, um, the request for qualifications will be for us to solicit designs for a new construction and/or a reconstruction of that property, which means basically that we're taking the footprint of that piece of property and we're going to look to possibly reconstruct or make new, uh, using that piece of property.
Okay, that sounds good. Another question I was going to ask you about was, uh, so on the construction project updates, I see that Heron Landing is, is kind of getting completed and, and, uh, if the required maintenance period is up in October, that's probably when we would have the gra, the ribbon cutting or so?
Yes, so we, um, have had the rain delays. And unfortunately that has set us back a little bit in our timeline, but we are looking for a ribbon-cutting celebration in October, uh, once we secure the property and be able to, um, open it up. So that's exciting.
Yes, I did also want to say that I had an opportunity to bump into Angel Ball, uh, of our, with Vin and, um, and, uh, she, we, she had talked about how well our park has, uh, and staff, include most especially Director, uh, I'm sorry, District Administrator Larkin has been working with her on the project over at Fetish Field. And, um, what he called is, she was saying it's pretty much done. I mean, the whole assessment and decision, uh, but she was waiting, um, for your, go ahead. So enlighten me a little bit on this so that then I can be ready to respond to her.
Sure. So there's a couple of projects that they, I had toured the park with her and her husband. There were some special projects that they were interested in doing out at the park for beautification. So I've worked with, um, Jerry in identifying a tree planting, uh, opportunity for next fall. They're very excited about that. The sidewalk project was going on at that time. They have some other concerns about, uh, public nuisance related to a horseshoe pit. So we have the information in order for us to move forward with the removal of that. And then from there, uh, there are some other improvements that we're looking at. There's an, the original administrator's building was there. It's a very old building.
Yeah.
That is a bit of a, uh, unattractive, potential unattractive nuisance, that we're looking at potentially funding in a CIP project for the removal of that building, to make it more visibly appealing for the park and the residents around it. We have some other projects related to potentially the repurposing of the parking lot in front of that building, to make it more park-like, streamed. But they're very happy about how responsive we've been. They have complimented Jerry and his staff. It's a pleasure going out there and talking with them and, and having them feel heard and, um, that their projects are really, um, moving forward, probably quicker than they had expected to. So I, I appreciate the park staff and John Biondo, who's been out there managing the monuments that were installed, as well as some of those improvements we've been recently making. It's been a great success out there.
Sorry about that. She had mentioned something about the fact that the only thing that was holding up the project was that the horseshoe pit was put in by, as an Eagle Scout project and that, you know, she was asking me about that and I'm like, okay, well, I don't know, but probably respectfully, we'd like to let them know if we're going to be removing it.
Right, correct. So, um, from my understanding, there, it was an Eagle Scout project that had been installed?
To shores?
Yeah. If you want to, yeah.
It was an Eagle Scout in Troop 601 in Ranch Cordova. The, the scout just lives just around the corner. He's now 23 years old. Um, he did use his eagle at 18, but I was the assistant scout master of the troop at that time when that was put in. I have contacted the, the, the boy scout to let him know, um, that there, that the administrator will be calling him to, to tell him that unfortunately his project has become a public nuisance. He, 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 he's not, he's not thrilled, obviously, that, that it has to come out, but he does respect the community and he doesn't want, like I said, he just lives around the corner from it, so he doesn't want the problems and he doesn't want, you know, a year from now, somebody going, well, you know, that boy scout did this project and look, now we've got this problem in the park. So he understands. And, um, I had sent the information to Administrator Larkin and unfortunately, for some reason, that email never made it to him. I sent it from my personals to him and it didn't make it to him. So the note that I passed earlier tonight, that was the scout's information, so he can contact in this week. But he understands and, uh, the only, only ask that I had of Administrator Larkin is that, um, if that one's pulled out, when we get ready to put another one in, some place that we, we make it available for a boy scout to be able to put, put that in. That's my only request and that was the scout's request also, so.
That's great, that's wonderful. So hopefully you can move, we can move forward and, and with that project and I have an answer for Angel.
Yes, I will, um, be in touch with the, um, the Eagle Scout tomorrow and then, uh, follow up with our park staff for the removal of the horseshoe pit, um, soon after that.
Is it just going to be a removal and not replaced by anything, no need or what?
Turf.
Turf.
Yeah. And so it's really just a very easy removal of a spike in a piece of wood. And so then replacing it with turf, I believe, is what the plan is to kind of level out that activity.
Just like the golf course, put some grass seed on it, let it, got plenty of sand to let it grow in.
Speaking of the golf course, it is looking unbelievably fantastic out there. Jerry and his staff, it looks amazing. I would recommend you- Jerry and his staff, it looks amazing. I would recommend you go out there and check it out. Not only for the new restaurant that we're going to look to do a ribbon-cutting for in the near future, but also just to see the improvements on the greens and the maintenance. It's just absolutely incredibly gorgeous out there.
Good, good. That's great.
I think, I think it's a shame that we have to remove an amenity to a park because it's attracting the wrong type of clientele. I don't, I would like to, I would just be curious to see if it really remedies the problem because the people that were congregating out there still might congregate out there.
Let's see, yeah. That'd be interesting.
That was a question I had asked Mr. Ball about in terms of, does he really think that this activity is what the draw is for this activity? That was going on, that he was getting police involvement on to handle the situations. He can't say definitively that is why, but we won't know until we remove it. And then there's some other issues too. There's that building that is a bit of a deterrent in terms of visibility for security reasons out there. So, you know, it is deemed based on the reports that we received that that is the draw. And so with those reports, it just makes most sense for the neighbors to have that removed. And hopefully that does remove the problem from the area.
Does it actually have the metal posts in the ground?
Yes.
Because over at Larchmont Riviera East Park, our two courses, our horseshoe pits have no posts. So there might be a lot of posts that are missing in other things. So you might want to check out, maybe you could replace them with those. If you just to remove them, that, wouldn't that just put an end to? People are going there with their horseshoes but doing weird things and, but they're, is that the problem?
Yes, they're doing weird things out there.
Yeah, okay. I have some, I, I'm looking forward to October ribbon-cutting to Haren Landing. A community park. And it's going to be a beautiful community park. So I'm, I'm looking for great greatness, much like the White Rock Park opening that we had. So maybe an Oktoberfest or some type of a harvest festival theme or something that we can do. I thought that would be fantastic. So I can't wait for that.
Yep. The community there has been involved and they keep coming out. You're right, so.
And I have another question about the Little League proposal here about the, you're doing a junior field? A large field, 300 feet? And you're looking at two, two properties, Hagan Community Park and Dave Roberts. But you, you talk about potential conflicts. Is this something that you need to discuss with board members? Or do you need to resolve first the conflicts and then talk to us? Or is, I don't know what kind of conflict you're talking about.
Well, the reason why it's in the report is that it's just really an update on the fact that we're working with the city to identify potential spaces for this use. There has been discussions in the past of certain properties that they would like to expand Little League, some of which are not appropriate because they're neighborhood parks. So with the identification of these two parks through what our amenities are and what would be appropriate for an expansion, these were the two locations that were identified through Parks Planning Staff. And it was sent back to the city for them to evaluate. And I don't believe we've heard back from them as to whether or not they wanted to move forward with that.
Because I know that that's the city that, that they had the consultants, remember here? Paul? What's her name?
We suggested that Dave Roberts would be a better location than.
Yeah, and they were supposed to look at it, right? Yeah. Because they wanted Alstrom. That's the thing. Okay.
But I had circled the words potential conflicts that already exist.
Is it neighborhood?
The, the conflicts would be as existing contracts and existing users of those properties. So for them to have exclusive use of those fields would probably be a conflict. We already have agreements made on a yearly basis in a lot of cases. And so it would not be in our best interest to cancel those existing contracts for the potential of needing or using those fields.
I also forgot to mention Kids' Day. Did we mention Kids' Day today? That was also a great event. It was the 29th of April. What a great event that was.
I just had one question on the grant matrix, which I love. You know, I've been sort of like a dog with a bone on this Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment grant. Originally, we were supposed to hear something potentially in March and potentially in February and then March. And now it says top-ranked projects will be asked to submit a full application in July slash August. Are we a top-ranked project? Have we been asked to submit a full application? So you haven't heard anything at all? Okay. All right, thank you. So I guess we are on to communications.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. This evening, item J1, we have two articles and two board meeting minutes from the Friends of Cordova Parks Incorporated, three design work pieces, and one newsletter.
Okay, if there are no questions, then I think we are moving on to future agenda items.
Where's the calendar? Are we, are we to the calendar yet?
The calendar is after the future agenda item. It's part of the future agenda items and events calendar. It's basically the last page of your package.
Yeah, it's gone. Someone stole it. I have a question about, will we get to that? I have a question about.
So would you like me, so item K1, the next regular board meeting is June 21st, 2017. And we will have the fiscal year 2017-18 preliminary budget work session during that meeting?
Just prior to, starting at 4:00 PM.
Okay. And then I will be appointing an ad hoc committee at the next meeting to help us begin the district administrator evaluation process. And now we are on to K2, the administration slash board calendar.
Oh, I have a question about this board calendar. Oh, I just found it. I see Rosemont Community Association meetings in here. I see Recas in here. How come we don't have Gold Rivers? And how come we don't have Anatolia's? If they do have one on at Mather, I'd like to be notified at least when these, they hold there? Their monthly meetings? Just to pop in sometimes, make my face available?
I believe we can get those dates available. As we discussed at previous meetings, I believe those homeowners associations are more closed types of meetings. And you would need to be requested or asked to attend in order for the, the culture of those meetings for it to be acceptable.
Could you find out if they would, if they would honor the appearance of a park board director at their meeting?
If it's you, of course. It would of course love to have you there. Let me.
I know Craig Osborne would love to see. He loves it when we show up.
Let me check with Vivian and we'll check on those dates for you. And then we'll just check on the, if there is something that they would be fine with having one of our board members attend for sure.
Yeah. If, I, I agree. I'd love to know when they're having the board meetings for the Anatolia and the Gold River. I mean.
There, there are a lot of villages in Gold River. There's not just one. There's like, oh my gosh.
Annual, we have an annual Golden, yep.
So we would want to be specific as to the ones that you're most interested in, I guess. And then we can look to narrow that down because there are. Yeah, and so maybe that is one of the, yeah, Prospect Park out there. So if, in order to be efficient and not overload with information and potential meeting dates, we'll identify Gold River, the annual, is there a larger one?
In Gold River, there is a very strong neighborhood watch there. And I think it's pretty much the manor homes. So you have the, the Gold Country Boulevard area. Marilyn Hulk, I think is her name. But they are awesome with communicating safety, communicating vandalism, communicating. And I think, you know, it would be nice for us to be able to try and see if we could get something around our parks. You know, Prospect Park.
So more the neighborhood watch group versus the village homeowners associations?
I think they have an association there. But, but check out the, the makeup of the associations and see where we would fit best, like.
The Gold River area has somewhere upwards of 20 separate miniature villages, which each have their own HOA. There is one that is basically a board of all of them. And they have, I think, quarterly meetings and/or just an annual meeting. So all of that information is actually available on their website for all the individual villages. But I can get you the date if possible, because they don't always advertise for the membership, annual membership meeting. The other ones are just really board members of each individual HOA, is what my understanding is.
And you know, Dave Long, who sat on our PMR ID and just loves Danielle, working with Danielle. Yes, really. He just loves working with her because she's so efficient. And he's a, you know, I, I kinda got him to serve for two years and he's, he's great. He, I think also sits on a board. I'm not sure if it's a general board, because you are right. There is a village board. And then there is a board for the whole, all the villages, you know, held at the community house. But see what you need, you know, and, and feel free, Patrick, to, to see if, if I can give you more information like that.
So we're, we're looking at Gold River, Anatolia, are there other areas? Mather, okay.
I mean, these are the, these are the places that I think we serve. And I think, is Breka Larchmont? Breka, that's.
Riviera, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of been included.
The soccer field out there at Larchmont Park, they used to have an organization, but I think it's sort of like.
We've, we've taken care of it.
Does Breka include them?
Kate Rosely used to run.
I was gonna say, we, we diffused concerns and became very well.
But I think there is a difference between a homeowners association and in a community association. You know, in Rosemont, for instance, I do not live in a homeowners association area. You know, I can put whatever window shades in my windows I want. And so I think that's different, a community association versus a homeowners association.
Yep.
We will have those dates. We'll research those and we'll have them at our next meeting.
Patrick, and, and the directors, I wanted to ask, I did mention to you at one time that our business cards in the back used to have the areas that we serve. I think it was very, I had requested that at that time and they did it. Then all of a sudden, it disappeared and it's not there. And I think it's very important that we have in a front, it's our business card that we're directors. But flip over, it also helps us remember, you know, the districts, I mean, the, the areas that, that we serve, including the city of Ranch Cordova. But it also allows us to be able to show our constituents that, yes, we are your park board. So I was, I wanted to make a suggestion that maybe when we get new business cards, that I really would like mine to, to have serving these areas. I'm sure, I don't know how my other directors feel about it.
Well, that, that would cost more money to the district too, printing two-sided as opposed to one. I'm curious what the cost is. But we did use to have our, our, our vision, our, our mission statement on the card, which was kind of nice.
Which we don't have now. And I would think that if, you know, find out what it, it costs, but between you and me as a marketing expense, it might be very well worth it. It's a great tool for us, for me at least, for us. So FYI, please look into it.
If we have no further comments, then I am adjourning this meeting.
Actually, I'm so sorry, Chair Lineback. I just wanted to mention under the calendar that as Administrator Larkin mentioned, that after we consult the concessionaire at the golf course, we will be contacting you to schedule the ribbon-cutting. And that will be sometime in June. So just keep a lookout for my email on the ribbon-cutting.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, we are adjourning this meeting at 9:34.